All right, and now a motion for the regular minutes on March 14th, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion or corrections? All right. Welcome all, I am the mayor of Mayfair, Maysore. And the reason that I'm looking at my calendar and having a normal day for a council meeting, I'm not here is I was in Florida for Mother's Day weekend, and things changed as we did self-test for COVID, and it appears that I haven't seen my PCR test yet, but my wife has tested positive, so most likely I will test positive, so I will be here in Florida for a little bit longer, and I was hoping to make it back for May there, but that doesn't look like it will happen, but it is a reminder that while it's this pandemic and we keep thinking this is an endemic, it is not going away, and we need to maintain vigilance and protect those around us, so. And we'll probably hear a report from John about May Day, but again, I was hoping that if all the weather would do me a favor by making it seem reasonable this past weekend, that maybe I was going to be able to make it for this weekend, but I look forward to a great May Day weekend coming up. Also, going on is last week, a tourney club dinner that I was not able to attend, but there was a great showing, and council members, police, fire, and staff, as the tourney club recognized Madison Fire Department members, Baryus, Merrick, and Lieutenant DeRosa, and Police Department members, Corporal Keenan, Sergeant McCarthy, and Captain Longo. They were honored for their actions during the house fire on Kings Road, they certainly made Madison proud, but more importantly, our life was saved through their heroic efforts. Employee of the month, Renee Brianna Lee, and Vivian Person from the Joint Municipal Court have been selected as our employees of the month. After another employee resigned several months ago, the two deputy court administrators took on additional tasks to keep the court running efficiently. They also helped with the destruction of documents along town and transitioned court after a hard attachment between. And we have, we've got a little anniversary, also Benny Edwards from the library is celebrating her 20th anniversary on May 1st, though she's celebrated already, and Dave Rader, Electric Utility Department, will celebrate his 30th anniversary on May 11th, so two days from now, so you see David after the signing, please congratulate him. And we have a series of proclamations to present, and, hold on a second here. Sorry. All right. And we have the reduced, and rather than have the mayor of ours behind the screen presenting these resolutions, I've asked the council members to help, and so letter carriers, Stamp Out Hunger, being presented by, I think, Eric.
Whereas hunger affects-
Thank you. Sorry, this is really very bad.
Not well rehearsed here. Whereas, hunger affects one in eight Americans, including millions of children, senior citizens, and veterans, a reality that is being tackled by the U.S. letter carriers through their food drive, which is held annually on the second Saturday in May. And whereas, the Stamp Out Hunger Food Drive is the country's largest one-day food collection and provides residents with an easy way to donate food to those in need. And whereas, the NALC food drive is held in 10,000 cities and towns in all 50 states, the District of Columbia, Puerto Rico, the Virgin Islands, and Guam, and is helped by many local volunteer groups, including the United Way, Salvation Army, Catholic Charities, National Guard units, American Legion, and Veterans of Foreign Wars, Boy and Girl Scouts, Rotary Clubs, and AARP groups. And whereas, in the 30 years since it began, the food drive has collected about 1.82 billion pounds of food. And whereas, the timing is important, with food banks, pantries, and shelters running low on donations from the winter holidays, and with summer approaching, when many school meal programs are suspended. And whereas, the need is as great as ever, given the pandemic-caused economic dislocations of the past two years. Now therefore, Robert H. Conley, Mayor of the Borough of Madison, on behalf of the governing body, does hereby proclaim Saturday, May 14th, 2022, as National Association of Letter Carriers' Food Drive Day, and encourage residents to support the food drive by placing non-perishable food items in or near your mailbox on Food Drive Day. Further, I commend the National Association of Letter Carriers for initiating this humanitarian project, and will directly benefit those in our community.
Well, thank you, thank you, and hopefully this year will be a good year for us, so Saturday, we're ready, and we're going to help out the needy. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks so much.
Thank you. And with the HBC Awards, Maureen Byrne.
Mr. and Mrs. Forbes, can you come up? And Jill Rhodes from HBC? Come on, let's all go up. Okay. So, whereas, the Madison Historic Preservation Commission was established in 1993 by ordinance number 31 to encourage preservation of sites of historic, archaeological, cultural, scenic, and architectural significance, and to provide architectural advice and recommendations on plans submitted for renovations to the facade of properties, not only in the historic district, but also throughout the Borough of Madison. And whereas, the Forbes Home at 11 Varden Street in Madison was constructed in 1928 and is an excellent example of the English cottage style. The steep-pitched roof, stucco exterior, casement-style windows, and the double-height front-facing bay window are all harmacs of this style. And whereas, the Forbes chose Madison and this location because they loved the character of the neighborhood and the house. They saw the great potential in the house and were confident it could modernize the floor plan without needing to tear the house down. Whereas, after two years of planning, renovation work began in April 2021, the facade, the general style of the exterior, were maintained while adding a modest extension and porch on the back. They replaced the windows in the same style as the originals and retained important features, most notably the double-height, front-facing bay window. The stucco is painted in a cream color, accentuated with dark green wood trim, which is fitting for the English cottage style. Whereas, the Madison Historic Preservation Commission has congratulated and commended the Forbes family for making their homework for them, for retaining the original historical style of the house and the neighborhood. Now therefore, I, Robert H. Conley, on behalf of the governing body, do hereby recognize Robert and Jenna Forbes for the meticulous preservation and renovation on their home at 11 Varden Street, which contributes to the character of the Borough of Madison as a place of beauty and architectural value.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. No, we're doing, yep. Because of COVID. COVID is striking willy-nilly at our Borough Council meeting. So, proclamation of the Borough of Madison in recognition of Madison Court Apartments' affiliated management for preservation of historic elements of the building. Whereas, the Madison Historical Preservation Commission was established in 1993 by ordinance number 31 to encourage preservation of sites of historic, archaeological, cultural, scenic, and architectural significance, and to provide architectural advice and recommendations on plans submitted for renovations to the facade of properties, not only in the historic district, but also throughout the Borough of Madison. And whereas, according to the Madison Eagle article, Madison Court Rapidly Becoming New Home Center, published on December 6, 1927, the three-story Madison Court Apartment House at 46-50 Green Village Road shows the influence of, quote, "old English and Renaissance design," unquote, in its parapets, which rise above the roof, and, quote, "the front is made striking by six half-timbered windows on the second and third floor. The halls were finished with travertine floors and marble wainscot, which are still in place." Whereas, Mike Finer, the property manager with Affiliated Management Inc., said that the design and quality construction of the building had made it one of the flagship properties of affiliated management over the years. However, a well-constructed building nevertheless requires maintenance and repair over time. In the summer of 2021, Martins Builders LLC of Whistville was hired to rebuild the center section of the front facade. New brick was brought in to match the original buff-colored brickwork, and the original limestone tim was carefully removed and then replaced when structural repairs were completed. And whereas, the Madison Historic Preservation Committee Commission has applauded the efforts of Affiliated Management Inc. in their efforts to restore and preserve the Madison Court Apartment Building, which is an important part of Madison's 20th century development. Now therefore, on behalf of Robert H. Conley, Mayor of the Borough of Madison, and on behalf of the governing body, do hereby recognize the Madison Court Apartments' affiliated management for their conscientiousness with regard to historic preservation in the borough.
I wanted to just say a few words, which, mind me. Hi, everybody. We just wanted to thank you, Mayor, and council for recognizing these projects. May is Historic Preservation Month, and it's important to highlight the good work our community is doing with the thoughtful preservation of their respectful properties. So we thank you, Rob and Jenna Forbes, as well as Mike Finer with Affiliated Management with the Madison Court Apartments, for the great work that you have done and your thoughtful restorations and renovations. So the historic charm and character Madison has is part of what makes us such a great place to live, and some would argue the best place in New Jersey to live. I won't argue against that. And while we are a town that looks forward, we must not forsake our past. It's important to keep preserving buildings in our town, and keeping them in good use is good for the character of the whole community, as well as the environment. And then lastly, I would be remiss if I didn't thank the hard work of my Madison Commission members, John Forte and his daughter Clara, who's responsible for designing and ordering our beautiful signs, and of course Adrian Novak and Mary Ellen Lenahan, for all the work they did in pulling this together, and we thank you all so much.
Very good, and now for Mental Health Awareness Month, Deb Cohen.
I think I'm the only one that doesn't get to present to somebody. Whereas, mental health is part of overall health, and whereas, mental health sustains individuals' thought processes, relationships, productivity, and ability to adapt to change, and whereas, nearly one in five Americans live with a mental health condition, which includes anxiety, depression, schizophrenia, bipolar disorder, and post-traumatic stress disorder, and whereas, youth mental health is worsening with nearly 10% of America's youth reporting severe depression, and whereas, early identification and treatment can make a difference in successful management of mental illness and recovery, and whereas, the COVID-19 pandemic and the resulting economic crisis have caused isolation, sickness, grief, job loss, food instability, and loss of routines has increased the need for mental health services, and whereas, the need to protect people from COVID-19 has made it more challenging for people to access mental health services, and harder for providers to deliver this care, and whereas, mental health recovery not only benefits individuals with mental health disorders by focusing on their abilities to live, work, learn, and fully participate and contribute to our society, but also enriches the culture of our community life. Now therefore, I, on behalf of Robert H. Conley, Mayor of the Borough of Madison, on behalf of the governing body, do hereby proclaim May 2022 as Mental Health Awareness Month, and call upon residents, businesses, and schools to recommit to increasing awareness and understanding of mental illness, and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental illnesses to promote recovery. And I will just make a personal statement on this, please keep in mind, you can't always see mental health. People can mask it, people can hide it. Just because somebody looks like they know that they're good, they're normal, everything's fine, check in on everybody. It's been a tough couple of years, adults and children alike.
Thank you very much, Deb. And to present, our T-shirt designer winner for May Day, John Hoover. I wish I was there, this is always one of my favorite parts of the time of the year.
Thank you. As you know, May Day had to be rescheduled for Saturday, next Saturday, because of this tremendous storm this past weekend. This allowed us the opportunity to honor this year's May Day T-shirt contest winner ahead of the event. I'd like to call up this year's winner, Lucia Riley, and her family. Lucia is a third grader in Mrs. Anderson's class at Central Avenue School. Central Avenue School Principal Tom List is also here this evening to help us honor Lucia. Tonight, she is here with her parents, Andres and Maria, her older sister Victoria, who attends Madison Junior School, and their neighbors Lisa and Dave. Lucia is a very active girl. I can't keep up, I'm going to pass out because I'm going to be so tired. She is the Madison, she's with the Madison soccer team, travel, she plays rec basketball in the winter, softball in the spring, as in the Barracuda Swim Team in the summer. She is a Girl Scout, a Brownie. Lucia also plays, enjoys musical theater. This year, she should participate in two plays, Little Mermaid, Beauty and the Beast. She recently did her first community at the St. Vincent's. In her free time, she likes going to Jungle Juice, McCool's, and Sugar Rush. She loves horseback riding and wants to be an architect when she grows up. She is very passionate about dogs. Lucia was born in Argentina and moved to Madison when she was four months old. We are also joined by Bob Rocco, a Providence Bank, who will be presenting Lisa with a Madison gift check for $100 as her prize for having her beauty, creative, design chosen, right?
The check is in the mail.
Thank you, Lisa. And we all look forward to wearing our May Day T-shirts with your design, and it's coming Saturday, okay? So enjoy, thank you very, very much, congratulations. That's great.
Let me show one of the shirts in my direction, I have not seen the shirt yet.
Show the plaque.
The plaque, yep. Yep, looks good, that is great, well done. I'll be wearing that, sadly, I won't be wearing it on May Day, but I'll be wearing it after May Day very proudly. And I almost overlooked another proclamation, Rachel Olick, Ben Barnes, and Ernest Halloway.
Whereas, every day, more than 100 Americans are killed by gun violence, and additional 230 are shot and wounded, and on average, there are more than 13,000 gun homicides every year. And whereas, Americans are 25 times more likely to be killed with guns than people in other high-income countries. Whereas, New Jersey has 445 gun deaths every year with a rate of five deaths per 100,000 people. And whereas, protecting public safety in the communities they serve is a mayor's highest responsibility. And whereas, support for the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens goes hand-in-hand with keeping guns away from people with dangerous histories. And whereas, firearms are the leading cause of death for children and teens in the United States. And whereas, gun violence prevention is more important than ever. And whereas, gun violence prevention is more important than ever as the COVID-19 pandemic continues to exacerbate gun violence after more than a year of increased gun sales, increased calls to suicide and domestic violence hotlines, and an increase in city gun violence. And whereas, in January 2013, Hadia Pendleton, a teenager who marched in President Obama's second inaugural parade, was tragically shot and killed just weeks later, should now be celebrating her 25th birthday. And whereas, to help honor Hadia, other victims of gun violence, and the loved ones of those victims, people across the United States will recognize National Gun Violence Awareness Day and wear orange. And whereas, the idea was inspired by a group of Hadia's friends, who asked their classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange. They chose this color because hunters wear orange to announce themselves to other hunters when out in the woods, and orange is a color that symbolizes the value of human life. And whereas, anyone can join this campaign by pledging to wear orange on June 3rd, the first Friday in June 2022, to help raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives of gun violence victims and survivors. And whereas, we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the wrong hands, and encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our children safe. Now therefore, on behalf of Robert H. Conley, Mayor of the Borough of Madison, and on behalf of the governing body, I do hereby proclaim June 3rd, 2022, as National Gun Violence Awareness Day, and encourage all citizens to wear orange to support their local community's efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and to honor and value human lives.
Thank you for all you do. And next, I'm in general, wait, this just in, a last-minute proclamation. Council President Landry, then, I think you have one to present.
It turns out that this is Municipal Clerk's Week. Ms. Osborne, come on down. Oh, you didn't think you were getting off that easy, were you? Okay. Whereas, the office of the municipal clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government exists throughout the world, and whereas, the office of municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants, and whereas, the office of municipal clerk provides a professional link between the citizens, the local government bodies, and the agencies of governments and other levels, and whereas, municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal services to all, and whereas, the municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community, and whereas, municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of affairs of the office of the municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, province, county, and international professional organizations, and whereas, it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the municipal clerk, notably Elizabeth Osborne, Karid Reyes, Bonnie Mulcahy, and Helen Corlett. Now therefore, on behalf of Robert H. Conley, Mayor of the Borough of Madison, and on behalf of the governing body, we do hereby recognize the week of May 1st through May 7th as Municipal Clerk Week, and further extend appreciation to our municipal clerk, Elizabeth Osborne, and to all municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. Congratulations, Liz.
Thank you, Deb, thank you for everything you do. All right, we now deviate to report from committees. So you two, new, Council President Landry then.
Okay. From the Electric Department, the Electric Department is currently setting polls for the police-
Actually, Bob, you want to hold up a second, I'd love to see you. So at least I don't want to hear the rest of the meeting, you're welcome to head on out. Thank you very much for coming out to see all the winners, and I would say now, I tried to teach you with a beer pie at the end of the meeting, but honestly, the government is a big fan of Madison, so. All right. All right, Bob, you can go ahead, and just direct, I'm going to turn off my video for just a second, that can get more water, but I'm not leaving the meeting also.
Go ahead, yeah, go ahead. Okay, from the Electric Department, the Electric Department is currently setting polls for the Police Department, so they may install cameras. On Friday, April 29th, there was a power outage on North Street and Park Avenue caused by a squirrel. Full power was restored within 45 minutes. The department has completed the line construction work on Elm Street for the new condominium development. We have been, the Electric Department has been meeting with electrical contractors in several areas seeking to install three-phase EV charging stations. The Electric Department continues to work behind Lincoln Place so they can stay on track, stay on top of the old movie theater development project, and finally, the Electric Department continues to mark cutouts, house services, and replacing old HPS street bulbs, streetlight bulbs with the new energy-efficient LED heads. From the Water Department, the Water Department received 130 additional mark-out requests for this year's tree planting programs. The department had to locate, excavate, and repair two curb boxes so the homeowners' contractors can make necessary repairs to their water service. The New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection State inspectors made their annual housekeeping inspection of the wells, treatment plants, storage tanks, and record-keeping for the department. The department also repaired a leak, a leaking water fountain at the Lucy D. Anthony Baseball Field, and finally, anyone interested in installing a radio-readable water meter, please call the department to make an appointment. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And Public Safety, Ms. Byrne.
Thank you, Mayor. During the month of April, the Fire Department responded to 19 general alarms, 14 steel alarms, 34 investigations, 38 medical calls, for a total of 105 incidents for the month. 45 fire prevention inspections were made, and 36 smoke and CO resale certificates were issued. There were two department drills held. One was in an acquired structure that is slated to be knocked down. Firefighters were able to drill in search-and-rescue techniques, hose-line advancement, and roof ventilations. On Friday, May 6th, Madison and Florham Park Fire Departments raised their large American flag to proudly honor local area high school students that will be entering the military when they graduate this coming June. when they graduate this coming June. This ceremony is held annually on the FDU campus. And from the Police Department, earlier this morning, the Police Unity Tour traveled through our center of town with several hundred law enforcement bicycle riders and support vehicles on the way to Washington, DC. The bike ride is to honor law enforcement officers who died in the line of duty. The Police Unity Tour was established in 1997 with less than 20 bike riders, several from the Madison Police Department. Since that time, Madison Police Department has always had an officer involved in the ride. This year, Captain Joe Longo will be helping in a support vehicle. Let's wish all the riders a safe 300-mile ride over the next four days. For more information on their cause, visit www.policysunitetour.com. Last week, from May 2nd to May 6th, the Police Department members took part in their spring firearm qualifications that took place over the course of five days at our firearms range on John Avenue. This training, which is mandated by the New Jersey Attorney General's Guidelines, occurs in the spring and fall season. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And Community Affairs, Mr. Huber.
Thank you, Mayor. From the Downtown Development Commission and the Director of Business Development, the next meeting of the Downtown Development Commission will be this Thursday, May 19th, at 7:15 PM. It's an open public meeting, and everybody is invited to attend. Downtown Development Commission's May Day in Madison Townwide Beautification Day has been rescheduled for Saturday, May 14th due to this weekend's stormy weather. It is not too late to volunteer or to make a flower basket donation. Email ddc@rosenet.org for more information. The Madison Farmers Market will be celebrating its 30th anniversary this year. It will open on Thursday, May 19th, at Dodge Field. The Green Village Parking, Green Avenue Parking Lot between the Presbyterian Church and Rosegarden Park on the corner of Green Avenue and Kings Road is now open to the general public. This parking lot, close to Waverly Place and the heart of the downtown, will provide free two-hour parking to those visiting Madison. For a map and all information on parking in Madison, go to Parking Information page on Rosenet. A webpage for information on the Waverly Place Reconstruction Project has been added to rosenet.org. You can find it on the Main Street Business Development page. All project updates and information will be shared here as the project planning moves forward. Bottle Hill Day is scheduled for Saturday, October 1st. Sponsorship and vendor information will be released in mid-May. From the Chamber of Commerce, the Chamber's Annual Award Dinner will be Tuesday, June 14th, at the Brook Lake Country Club, beginning at 6:00 PM. The following businesses and individuals are being recognized. Outstanding Interior Renovation Award, Shanghai Jazz. Outstanding Expansion and Renovation Award, the Madison Area YMCA. Innovation Award, Solacean Salons. Cornerstone Award, Bagel Chateau. Community Service Award, Stop &amp; Shop. Sustainability Award, Dish Kitchen. Distinguished Service Award, Jerry Harmon. Madison Community Arts Center. The lighting and grid project has been completed, save for some painting touch-ups. This includes the installation of black ceiling tiles and painting of the support rails for these tiles. Once the touch-ups are completed on Tuesday, May 10th, tomorrow, we will be putting up all 45 of our lighting instruments into the reparatory plot, which will allow us to quickly accommodate all of the advanced [inaudible]. We tested out the new grid this past Saturday with the cabaret function for the Madison-based business, the Support Network Foundation, Support the Support Network, attended by over 125 people and featuring 20 musicians and actors. This coming Wednesday, from 7:30 to 10:00 PM, we will be holding the second of our monthly music open mics, produced by Carolyn Romanelli. Last month's performance attracted over 50 people and featured seven performers. For those interested, Spotlight Kids will be presenting an original musical this coming weekend, Outside the Box, written by Madison High School's junior Aaron Peters. Performances will be at 3 and 7. This Saturday and Sunday, tickets available on the Spotlight Kids website. On May 21st and 22nd, we will be hosting a doubleheader music showcase event with four acts on Saturday at 7:30 and three on Sunday at 7:00. The Sunday showcase is headlined by Afro-Peruvian jazz artist Alejandro Atalkuzi. The event is also produced by Carolyn Romanelli. The Madison Hidden Figures Project will be resident at the center from June 1st to 10th. Gallery hours will vary, but they are posted on the Arts Center website. And there will be events associated with the gallery on Wednesday, June 1st, and Friday and Saturday, June 3rd and 4th. Full details are available on the Hidden Figures website, hiddenfiguresmadison.org. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And now for Financial Bureau Clerk, Ms. Collins.
Thank you, Mayor. From the Tax Collector's Office, residents are reminded that the second quarter property taxes were due May 1st. Tomorrow is the last day of the grace period. Anyone paying after tomorrow will receive interest penalties dating back to May 1st. Please keep in mind that New Jersey statute does not allow us to accept the postmark. The payment must be in the office tomorrow by 4:30 PM. Residents can pay online, but again, that payment must be made by tomorrow at 4:30. Don't wait until the last minute, and please call the tax office at 973-593-3056 if you have any questions. Two items from the Finance Department. First, the Chief Financial Officer worked with the Borough Clerk to certify the Board of Education budget. The BOE sent over a special form called the A4F, which certifies the school budget for the upcoming year, including their general fund and debt service. The Borough Chief Financial Officer reviews this information, and then the Borough Clerk signs off on it. This document is sent to the NJ Department of Education. Last year, the BOE budget was $45,593,403. This year, it was $46,341,527. That is an increase of 4,700, oh, 4 million, sorry, not enough commas, $4,748,124, or 1.64%. Second, the Finance Department has been working with the auditors to get them the necessary information for the annual audit. Staff from Nisfozia, I should know how to pronounce that, were here in Hartley Dodge last week, reviewing the books, meeting with staff, and gathering the needed information. The Audit Committee will be meeting in the coming weeks to review the draft work product, and then the final audit will be provided thereafter. As a reminder, residents can find the audits, municipal budgets, debt statements, and unaudited annual financial statements in the Finance Department section under Rosenet. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. It took me a couple years to be able to pronounce Nisfozia, so. And now moving on to Public Works NJ and [inaudible].
Thank you, Mayor. The Engineering Department reports that we have seen good construction progress on the Hartley Dodge Memorial Plaza construction last week, and we are hopeful that we'll see completion of this corrective work by the end of the month. We are anticipating a June start for our road construction and mill and overlay projects for this year. And there will be a Morris County virtual public presentation of the Columbia Route 24 intersection on Tuesday, May 17th, at 7:00 PM. Concept information and a link to the May 17th virtual public info session is available online at morriscountynj.gov. I found that if you search interchange in the search field, right in the front and center of the homepage, this concept information and link to the Zoom session is the first result, so very easy to find on the morriscountynj.gov website. On tonight's agenda, we have a resolution recognizing the adoption of a Complete Streets policy and recognizing that the Complete Streets Committee is active, making this an official part of the Borough Code. I'll just note, the committee has been acting since the Complete Streets Guidelines were adopted in 2012, and this resolution makes it official in our Borough Code. Public Works reports that we have received shade trees, and the DPW is making their way around town to plant them. This is the spring planting, and they will do another planting in the fall. Public Works is out filling potholes and doing blocktop patchwork from the winter. Ken O'Brien, our superintendent, noted that temperatures this past winter were varied between extreme cold and warmth, leading to more potholes than in previous years. Public Works has repaired the Waverly Clock. It had a malfunction, and it took some time to get a new motherboard, but it is all fixed up and working properly again. And finally, spring sports are in full swing, and Public Works crews are outlining the fields daily and mowing daily, so we thank them for keeping our sports fields in great shape. That's all from Engineering and Public Works.
Thank you. And for Health, Mr. Orange.
Thank you, Mayor. Morris County's COVID-19 community level is currently medium. Cases do continue to rise in our area, with weekly cases last week at 344 per 100,000 residents. These are the highest case counts we've seen since February 1st. Hospitalizations, while not overwhelming, do also continue to increase. As Morris County's community level is now medium, those at higher risk for severe outcomes should strongly consider wearing a mask indoors, especially where social distancing and ventilation remain challenging. While the public transit mask mandate has been lifted, the CDC continues to encourage travelers on airplanes, trains, buses, and other forms of public transit to wear a mask. It is a simple and effective way to contribute to our collective public health, especially in the face of these increasing cases in our area. Visit rosenet.org for more on Madison's COVID-19 status. And remember to stay up to date on your recommended doses of COVID-19 vaccine. An important reminder that isn't COVID-related on children's health. Since the pandemic began, there has been a higher-than-normal incident rate of children missing recommended vaccines and other preventative care. If you've put off these items for your child, and they might be vision and hearing screenings, those recommended childhood vaccines, general wellness screenings for blood lead levels, height and weight, blood pressure, and alike, contact your healthcare provider and schedule these important appointments before the end of the school year and the busy summer season. And finally, tonight, not only is it Clerk's Week, it is also National Nurses Week. So a special thanks to all the nurses that work in our schools, healthcare settings, research, and especially those working in the public health arena and in the Madison Health Department that have been getting us through the pandemic and well into the endemic phase of this pandemic. So that's all from Health, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Looks like we forgot one proclamation. And just to follow up, John did a reminder that I wanted to mention that last week, Madison Photos celebrated its 75th anniversary. Jerry Harmon has been recognized by the Chamber of Commerce, started working there as a Drew student in the early 70s, eventually bought this store and has been running ever since. So please stop by and say congratulations to Jerry if you can't make the Chamber Dinner. And I, along with members of the Chamber, presented Jerry with a proclamation last Wednesday before I headed out of town. And now we move on to Communications and Petitions.
Yes, Mayor, the council received the following, received an email from the following residents regarding their support for saving the Drew Forest, Lori Reynolds, John McRedd, excuse me, McGrady, Mark Shealan, and Evan and Amanda Laurie, as well as an email from Resident John Larkin of Elm Street regarding the abuse by Optimum and the lack of files served.
All right. Thank you very much. And now we're on to our first of two invitations for public comment. This is limited to, this one is limited to the general discussion, which is the [inaudible] update, or resolutions that are listed in the consent agenda. If you wish to comment on [inaudible] being introduced, you can do that at the second comment period, but also you can comment on any other topic. Just so you know, these are the resolutions that are part of the consent agenda, Resolution 142, purchasing a vehicle, that's ready for Public Works, and this was [inaudible] 21, and not to exceed $67,714.50. Resolution 143 is a living contract to Reed's Inc. for controlling even invasive species in Madison Recreation Complex, and this is for not to exceed $3,600 funded [inaudible] 21, 2019. Resolutions 144 is authorizing special event permit to use the Summer Park by Burt Scott's America, [inaudible] 124. And Resolution 145 is authorizing [inaudible] to hold a renovate ride on B11, 2022, to [inaudible] must be [inaudible] in this will happen along Kings Road, between Green Road Road and 27 Kings Road, and this [inaudible] 11:11, 2:00 PM. Resolution 146 is for [inaudible] license for Madison Recreation Service. Resolution 147, [inaudible] this one is pulled back, so skip that one. We have a new Resolution 147. This one's [inaudible] here, and these next two are, we do every few years to, as part of our Sustainable Madison certification. Resolution 147 is supporting the adoption of an environmentally preferable purchasing policy. Resolution 148 is supporting adoption of environmentally conscious grounds and maintenance policy. So you can comment on any of those policy or resolutions or the [inaudible] project. If you want to comment, please step forward, state your name, address, the resolution you are commenting on, and [inaudible] and try to keep your comments for three minutes, but you give your one minute grace, and we ask you to stop at four.
Hi, Claire Whitcomb, 12 Fairwood Road. I would just like some more information. I know that these environmental resolutions have come through Sustainable Madison, but I would sort of like to know how the rubber meets the road on any of these, if at all, because resolutions are really nice to have, and what does it mean to have a preferable purchasing policy, and I'm particularly interested in environmentally conscious grounds. Thank you.
[inaudible] can you touch on that? I'm going to put you on the spot.
Sure. So Resolution 147 is supporting the adoption of environmentally preferable purchasing policy. The language of this resolution is substantially similar to the versions of this resolution we've passed previously, and it reaffirms the borough's support to have, to select materials that conserve natural resources, minimize environmental impacts, support strong recycling markets, et cetera. Part of why we re-adopt this resolution periodically is to affirm the borough's commitment to it and to have the support of council members who didn't previously vote on this because they were not part of the council at the time. And similarly, the resolution supporting the adoption of environmentally conscious grounds and maintenance policy lists various objectives that we should seek in our grounds maintenance, which is to minimize environmental impacts, toxics, pollutions, and hazards to worker and community safety, and then furthermore, to conserve natural resources, minimize environmental impacts such as pollution and use of water and energy. So again, this resolution is substantially similar to previous versions of the green, of the grounds and maintenance policy. I think it's good to re-up it not only for our Sustainable Madison certification, but as a reminder to all of us, and perhaps to me as the liaison to Engineering and Public Works, that we should always be operating when we talk with our Public Works Department under this commitment to conserve natural resources and utilize products and methods that minimize environmental impacts and hazards to worker and community safety. So because we have this policy in place, when we work with Ken O'Brien to talk about greens and, you know, grounds maintenance, this is our guidelines for, you know, how we ask our DPW to do their work. I think if what you're asking is, how do we ask Ken to do that, then, you know, I feel like this is a guideline where we can ask him to explain perhaps what other methods or systems or products are on the market, whether there are preferential options that we could choose based on this, and just And just make a point of on an annual basis confirming that we are adhering to these guidelines to the best of our ability as a borough.
Thank you, Rachel. Appreciate that explanation. You did a great job. I was putting you on the spot there, so you didn't have anything left in front of me. And whenever we do a resolution, every department head that's affected by a resolution receives a copy of the end guidelines as to what they need to do interior to it. So thank you for that question. Anyone else want to comment on resolutions or on agenda item? Seeing none, I close this party meeting and we'll move on to the Water Meter Modules Update. Jim? I'm Jim.
We got two Jims here, Mayor. I have Jim Trimble with me, customer service manager. And honestly, he doesn't want to admit it, and he doesn't like to hear it, but he's the head of the tech. Because there's a lot of things I don't understand, and he'll tell you he's not good at it, but he really is excellent at it. And I appreciate his help. He's here to answer some questions, and I might even put him on the spot for a little public speaking. So the project, tonight, we have a $2 million capital ordinance on the agenda. Over half a million dollars of it is coming out of reserve. That was money that had been put aside years ago when we were talking about this project. And then, as you know, you voted on and adopted significant dollars to go into the Water Capital Improvement Fund. $1.4 million will come out of that. We need to buy new water meters. We need to buy the communication modules that connect to the water meters. And we need to contract with technical staff that will come out and install it. We only have three employees in the utility, so we just don't have the ability to have those staff go out. They have to go into every house. A little bit different than when Jim was walking around and putting all the electric meters, which was a whole lot easier to do because they're on the outside of the house. And we've installed over 1,000 of the water meters, water modules in town, but we still have 4,000 to go. So the hiring of technicians, and we did a pilot program and hired a company to install meters over the Madison Commons. We learned a lot from that. Jim was out there in the field working with them, and they installed the meters and the modules. And it is a labor-intensive process. The company does the following. They do all the outreach to the customers. They call, they send emails, they reach out, they set up the appointments. The only way they make money is if they get an appointment and go in and change a meter. The technicians go into the property, take photographs, and change the meter. And then that data is brought back to their house. They compile it into a flat file, which is imported into our billing system first, right, Jim? And then from our billing system, it gets exported into the meter communication system. So they do a lot of work for us. I think it was about $100 per meter when this company did it at the Commons. So our thought process here is we want to do it right. We want to do it once and do it right. So we learned a lot from the pilot program, and we talked about it before. How do they contact the customer? Phone, email, door hanger, letters? How often are they contacted? Customers' schedules and appointment, how does that even work? Is it visiting a webpage? Do they call the office? How big is that appointment window? Is it three hours, four hours, all day? We all know when we call the cable company, it's irritating when they say they're going to be there between 2:00 and 4:00, and then they don't show up until 7:00 o'clock. So we want to make sure that doesn't happen in this situation. Are there night and weekend appointments available? Data collection, what do we get? In this particular instance, we're very specific, thank you, Michael. We're very specific that we want to make sure that we receive photos of the conditions before and after the install. Our water utility staff, Tom DiBiase, Jim Finelli, Russell Boardman, they're not going into every home, but they have the ability to look at the conditions before and after with these photographs. It's very important. And the company has a portal where all these photos are linked. All the appointments are set up. You can see when the appointments are coming, if there's a question. Our staff, they call, oh, I have an appointment, I forget what it is. They call Magdalena or Donna. Donna, Magdalena can tell them, oh, you're set up for tomorrow at 10:00 a.m. So a lot of other questions that we want to work through. Quality control, progress meetings, insurance warranties, the experience that the company has with the modules, how the contractor communicates with the water utility when there are issues. And we need to manage the installation. We read water meters once every three months. My home, your home, it gets read once every three months. But my home may be read in January, April, and that cadence, where Rachel's home may be read in February and May and alike. So the town's basically split up into four groups. Four groups, right, Jim? And, three groups, and they have cadence of being read four times a year. So we need to manage that and make sure that they're not installing a meter the week that we need to read the meter. We actually need to do it kind of in the middle. So if I'm being read in January and April, they need to change my meter sometime in between February and, February and March. So a lot of management on that. We can only have about 100 meters changed a week because we don't want to overtax Jim and Tommy in the water utility because they will get called out. So, and we can, we don't want to do any more than 400 in a week for that reason. And communication to the residents is key. That's really one of the reasons why we're doing this today, just letting people know this is coming. In terms of purchasing details, there's three separate purchases that we'll be doing once this ordinance is established. We'll be purchasing the water meters from the Morris County contract. Those prices are going, that contract is ending soon, so we want to make the purchase for sure with materials. That price is going to go up. So we want to buy 4,000 water meters on that contract before that contract is up. The communication modules will be purchased as a bid. We've done that in the past. And then the tech installer will be done either as a bid or as an RFP. We're going to reach out to the New Jersey Division of Local Government Services and ask them for permission to do it as an RFP, which will allow us to not only be price, but have selections like the installer must be, have a main headquarters, or have staff located within 20 miles of Madison, 30 miles of Madison, for up to a year in case we have installation issues. So those type of non-financial terms can be baked into an RFP process. We talked about the coordination and installation of the reading schedules, one of the concerns. It takes a couple of days to confirm the communication. Once the information is installed, the installer can ping it and make sure that the module is working. But it takes, it takes a couple of days for Jim to actually see it show up in our water, in our AMI system. The conditions of residence-owned pipes is for sure the biggest concern we have. Jim's shaking his head, and I agree. I know my water main coming into my house is pretty old. And so the installation company is going to look at it and, does my valve work? I do know my shut-off valve works. Some people's shut-off valves may not work. So there's all these issues that they're going to be confronted with when they go into homes, and we're going to have to work through that. And if the issue is too great and we can't install the meter, then we're going to have to have conversations with the customer that they may have to have work done in their house by a plumber. As a reminder, we own the meter, but the customer owns the pipe coming from the water main into the house, and then they own the pipe right to the meter, and then they own the pipe on the other side of the meter going into their house. So it's their responsibility to deal with that if it's a significant problem. We do have a 30-day warranty on installation. Hopefully, residents will let the tech people in with COVID. Our goal is to have a 95% completion rate. Maybe it'll only be 90% with the water, with the conditions of the pipes. And so it's really important for us to find, finally, an installation company that's really going to treat our residents well. They're going to go into every home, and I don't want to get yelled at, and you don't want to get yelled at if they're not good. So the company that came in and did the Madison Commons was great. I think Jim would agree that they did a great job. So benefits, and I told Jimmy he's going to have to read a slide. So you want to read this slide, Jim, on benefits?
Yeah. Okay. Thank you, Jim. Yeah, the benefits are pretty obvious. These are putting in brand-new equipment that we can read remotely whenever we want. The list Jim has down here, no more asking customers to give us their water read and having to let us inside. Some people like having us come in, some people hate it. So this lets us read everything right from the office. Easier to get final reads when a property is sold. More accurate reading and less chance of human, AKA my, error. Less estimated billing, which often results in overbilling and credits being issued. We do that all the time because we have to estimate water meters all the time. We overbill them when we get an actual read. We credit them back. This eliminates that. It's easier to spot a stop meter. Like Jim was saying, we read these things four times a year. That's it, at best. So if someone's meter stops in January, we might not see it till April. And in that whole time, we're estimating or figuring what they've been doing. We can see a stop meter right from the computer, you know, a week or two after. And we're actually working with our AMI company to set up a report that would send us potential stop meters. They already have a report that sends us potential leaking water problems in people's houses. That's the next thing, leak detection capabilities. These things can tell you if there's a potential leak. So it's not guaranteed, but something you can go check out. The module batteries are rated to last 20 years, so that's good. New water meters will measure more accurately, and water field staff can concentrate on other parts of the systems. I have to convince them all the time. I beg them, can you come do a water meter here? Can you do a water meter there while they're busy doing other stuff? They can concentrate on that other stuff and not the water meters.
So this is a report, and this is what Jim knows how to deal with, that we rely on his expertise. It's just a report showing some homes with their water consumption. We do have 1,000 of these modules deployed already. And this is a report showing a stopped water meter. There's no consumption. Typically, you'd see consumption slowly going up throughout the month. So something's going on with this meter here, and that is something that Jim can flag and look at. And, you know, a question for Jim when we're talking about some of the benefits. How many, if you had to guess, water meter finals do we have in a month? And how did that process used to work five years ago? Remember when it was like five years ago?
Yes. I would say anywhere between 30 and 60 finals a month with water. Most of them on the first 15th or the last of the month when people tend to move. It used to be me driving around town, trying to meet people. People forget, collect a check. These we can get day of, we can get the day before, we can see your read. It reads six times a day, so we can get your water read at any time. Say, oh, I moved out last week, and now I'm in Massachusetts, and I totally forgot. We can pinpoint it to that.
So, you know, Jim used to go to the house with a calculator and a receipt pad and would look at the meter and then calculate your bill, and you had to give him cash or check right then. Now this can all be done if someone is working in New York City, and they just call and say, I'm closing, can I do a final? Yes, you can do it. Okay, I'll pay it online, and it's certainly much easier. So with that, that's kind of it for the quick presentation. Want to know if there's any questions?
And what we're doing is, since I can't see people, we'll rotate around with Bob and go all around the horseshoe.
Jim, I know that there are a number of older homes, a lot of older homes in Madison, and the plumbing in a lot of those can be pretty old. When you mentioned that it's up to the, and it could be working fine, you know, the water comes in, everything works. If you run into an instance where the plumbing doesn't conform to these new meters, like you said, it's up to the homeowner. They'd have to pay for the plumber to come in and do that, right?
That's correct. Now, the new meter will be exactly the same couplings and the same size as the old meter. So my house could have old pipes in it, but if the install tech looks at it and goes, I can loosen it, it's loosening up, no problem, and my old water, I have really old water shut-off, but I know it works, they can do it. So it's only in those situations. One other situation which we didn't really touch upon is, and Jim knows this, some people, their water meters are almost in inaccessible location. What's the worst one you've ever seen?
One where you, well, one where you can't see it anymore? People build around them constantly. And it's something that you're just not going to know, since I've been reading it from the outside for, you know, they could have installed the outside water just 30 years ago. People build right around them, you can't get to them, you have to take stuff apart. So that's another thing. Old valves and stuff, and then inaccessibility.
Yeah, so they could actually put a partition in what was an unfinished basement, and now we've got to go in and say, where's your water meter? I don't know. You need to find it. We're not going to start cutting holes in your drywall. So, but thank you for that question.
So we'll be able to monitor usage and reward people that reduce their water consumption?
Well, so that's interesting. I hadn't thought about that, however, that does tie into what I'm working on and what Jim has been helping me with, which is our water tariff is based on the size of the meter. If you have a two-inch meter, this is what you pay. If you have a 5/8 inch meter, this is what you pay. Most of us, most of them are residential meters, however, there are some people that have a two-inch water meter on their house, and it's on their house, right up on Woodland Road, right, Jim? But then I think Pine Acres has a two-inch water meter, right? So Pine Acres and the house are both paying the same amount. There's no differentiation between residential and commercial. When we did the rate analysis of water rates, and we realized there are some people who really use a fair amount of water, residents, for irrigation, we realized that there's no way we can resolve that until we can bifurcate the system and say, this is a two-inch water meter for a commercial, and this is a two-inch water meter for residential. Jim has figured that out, and he's working on it now. And so I am hopefully going to be sending a memo to you and then discussing the possibility of having a different rate structure for residential. If Pine Acres uses a lot of water, it makes a lot of sense because of a lot of water consumption going there on a two-inch meter. But if an individual home is using 2,000 gallons of water a day, which we do have residences during the summer using 2,000 gallons of water a day, we need to change that water rate structure to make that an incentive for them to potentially reduce and conserve other utilities as close as Marsh Township, Southeast Marsh Municipal Utility Authority, do this exact setup, and so we're going to template that. Great question, though. Thank you. Deb? John?
I don't really have a question. I just want to comment, though, on the excellence of the presentation and the work to date. I think we need to move forward with it expeditiously. You know, I hope we'll have the ability to, like this past weekend where we had over two inches of rain, where we can monitor people's water usage and lawn, you know, lawn watering, you know, and be able to somehow incentivize them not to water their lawns after heavy rain, you know? But I think it's a great project.
Thank you.
I hope we do it quickly.
Thank you.
It wouldn't be me if I didn't have a list of questions for you. Sure. But first of all, very excited that we're putting this forward and getting it off the ground. I just want to point out more as a comment going to how we're funding this, that we can do this because we own our own water utility. So not only can we pay for it that way, but we wouldn't be able to necessarily do it if American Water, somebody else, was our water utility, because we don't have that kind of control. Right?
Yep, correct.
On the, about how long, at the rate where you say we want to make sure they install at least 100 meters a week, but not more than 400? Are we looking at six months, a year?
So there's 4,100 water meters we have to, 4,000, Jim? About 4,100? So if we're doing 100 a week, it's going to be 41 weeks, right? So about a year, I think, is the timing. But we needed to go through all the procurement process. You guys will have, get the contracts where we'll ask for your vote on the contracts to appropriate and award contracts for the purchase of the meters and the modules and the tech. So we're looking at, I think, you know, fourth quarter to start this project.
And then also, you say that you have to, you want to do it by book, so that it's easier on our water guys, and they're not trying to figure out who was. But let's say that my water meter dies, and you're not doing my book. Am I getting an old water meter or a new water meter?
You're asking if your water meter stops while we're in the middle of a, say, a different rev?
Well, like, right, so if it stops and you're overworking on East Lane and that area, and I'm over on Hoyt Street. So am I going to get an old one, and then you'll have to come back and do a new one?
No, 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 we would, I think this is just a process of changing out en masse, like bulk meters. Like anything, you know, that we've usually done with stop meters or people calling and wanting a replacement, we'll still do that same as always. But we'll have, you know, like every meter is read once a quarter. So there's, you know, books are split up in thirds. So we'll finish one-third, start changing those out. But everyone else will be on the same schedule. I would assume that, like, if you have a problem with it or anything, that, you know, the water department will be able to come help you with it.
And we're not going to wait.
With a new meter, sorry.
Yeah, we're going to swap out a new meter as soon as possible and get a module on you. If it happens next week, if we don't start this until October, but my water meter stops and there's a problem, you know, Jim, we have to work on getting the water field-operated people there, but we'll do it.
And then on the chart where you talk about the water consumption, the AMI report that the other Jim put together, it's hard to see, I know, but some of those, it's a huge difference. That's what you're talking about, that some of these are, and I don't know what is commercial versus not with these addresses, but you've got some that are like in the 2,000 range, and then some in the 25,000 range. Is that gallons per day?
This is total consumption since the beginning of its installation.
Okay.
Cubic feet. So it's a difference, I mean, some of these are just smaller places as opposed to really big places. Some of these also were installed from day one, and some could have been installed a month or two ago. So the consumptions are going to swing.
So that's like an odometer, and that meter is in there longer than the other meter. Okay.
All right, and my other questions have been asked. That's all I've got.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim and Jim, for the great presentation. I just want to point out that this is really a significant investment that we're making. It's a $2 million capital improvement. So you've done a great job summarizing, you know, giving us an overview of the benefits to the borough, but I think it's just really important. Could you for us underscore what you think the top, you know, handful, three or four benefits are to the borough, to our water customers, who are really our residents and our businesses, and to our aquifer? Like, what's the headline on this? Why are we doing this project and investing so much money in improving our water infrastructure with this advanced metering infrastructure?
Accuracy, convenience, and what do you think, Jim? What would be the third one you would say? I
Can I say conservation?
It gives us the opportunity for conservation with a leak detection. Do you want to tell the story about a certain home up off of Woodland Road where they had a water leak and you ended up finding out? Remember? Come on, that's a good story.
Yeah. So they had a water leak at their house, but it was in their sprinkler line. So they were none the wiser. We found out about it when I went to go read it probably two months after the leak had started. So it became a massive bill for the customer, a massive waste of water, since this is just kind of pouring out into the lawn. With this system, we would have been warned about it probably within the first few days of it beginning. So like Jim said, I would say the biggest benefits are accuracy, convenience, but also in terms of that, you know, just knowing how much water you're using. Because like I said, at best, we can read these water meters four times a year right now. And we base everything on that, stopped, leak, what have you. This, we can judge them every day. We, you know, we can just run a quick thing like this to say, who's using the most, who's using the least, where are the leaks, where are the stop meters? It's just about having the information at your fingertips.
And to be honest with you, Jim's not out there reading the meters, so that's what Jim's going to be doing. I'm going to be wanting him diving into the data and looking for these situations. And, you know, to that point in that house, Jim was there. They're like, I don't understand, my bill's so high. Shut everything off. They walked through the whole, he walked through the whole house with them. Nothing is dripping, the toilet in the basement isn't running, everything else. And it was before COVID. And then he looks at the meter, it's still spinning. What's going on? Jim goes, what's this pipe right here? I hear water running to the pipe. Oh, that goes to the backyard, to the sprinkler system. And he shuts the valve off to that, the meter stops. So instead of having to do all of that, we could just notify them, say, something's going wrong. Something in your house is leaking significantly. And it will catch it months in advance. So yes, convenience, accuracy, and conservation.
Thank you.
While we're on the accuracy front, do we think we're going to be more accurate up or more accurate down?
So typically, water meters start to wear out as they get older, and water kind of sneaks by without the mechanism catching it. So I think we'll be up. We'll be up when we have that stopped meter, but it's not stopped. The water's still going through it, but we're not measuring it. So I think net will be up, but I can't look at the 1,000 meters that we've changed and say, oh, it's 1% or it's 2%, or it's one-half of a percent because it's so hard to tell. But net-net, we probably will be up, but it's not going to, it's not going to rain out of the sky money, but it will be, we won't lose.
And is there any benefit to tying a new water meter to real estate transfers, especially maybe ones that are in these older homes that have difficulty or somebody's put up a partition and making it on the sale of a home?
So if we had a CO that needed to be issued when there was a home transaction, we'd have a number of things. We'd want to inspect for an illegal sump pump. We'd want to inspect for smoke detectors. We'd want to inspect for panisters, and that certainly could be something that we could inspect. Because, you know, what, people, I don't have a register on my house, so Jim would actually come to my house, I'd have to read the meter. But a lot of people have an outside register on their meter, so Jim hasn't ever been inside that home. He goes to the outside with a special gun, touches it, it goes zup to the meter, comes back with a read. So, yeah, we don't know what's going to be going on in there. If we had a CO process, that could, that could resolve that. And to that point and to the conservation point, there could be a mandate that if you have a sprinkler system, as Mr. Hoover, Councilman Hoover was saying, that do you have a working rain gauge on it or some way to conserve the water? So that's something to think about.
Thanks, Jim.
Any other comments or questions? Great presentation, and this is great to see this happen, and conservation, we love it, so we encourage it, and we can control it.
Thank you, man.
All right. Well, no witnesses for hearing because we did not introduce anyone. Even if we did, we'd ask many, we don't have enough time in between. So we'll now move on to invitations for public comment number two. This is when you may comment on any topic. Again, please step up to the lectern, state your name, your address, write the same on the clipboard, and try to keep your comments to three minutes. I'll ask you to stop at four if you go past this. If you want to wish to comment, please step forward.
Hi, thank you for that water, it's Claire Wood, come to Al Fairwood. I don't even know where my water meter is, so that's my homework. And Maureen, I really liked your question. I'd really like rewarded for the amount of water I use because I got a rain barrel, and it's really great. I can do most of my outdoor watering by collecting water from my gutters. Okay, I have a story for you that you might like, and it involves the New Jersey Hills newspaper. A man named William Barry Thompson lives in Massachusetts but grew up in New Jersey. He is a historian who talks to garden clubs and is the co-author of Mansions of Somerset Hills, which he wrote with the late John Turpin of Turpin Realtors. And he read about the Drew Forest in the New Jersey Hills newspaper. And he is connected with Shift Natural Lands Trust, where my kids went to camp and were counselors, because I believed in throwing them into the woods. And the board of the Shift Natural Lands Trust wrote a letter and sent it to Friends of Drew Forest on May 5, and I'm going to read it to you. Dear friends, on behalf of the Board of Trustees of the Shift Natural Lands Trust headquartered in the Shift Nature Preserve in Mendham. If you haven't been to Shift, it's fabulous. You can really, you can hike. They have really great nature programs, especially for kids. Mendham is the headwaters of the Passaic River, and this used to be a boy scout camp. It's a great place. I digress. The board wishes to express Shift's support for the conservation of the entire 53 acres of Drew University Forest. The forest is an environmentally sensitive and important natural asset to the region and a significant asset to Drew, which has long been known as the university in the forest, which is the title of John T. Cunningham's history, first published 50 years ago. Shift Natural Lands Trust, formed in 1984, is a private, member-supported land trust. We are the steward of nearly 850 acres that we own, manage, and hold in conservation easements in the Morris County communities of Mendham Township, Mendham Borough, and Chester Township. Our mission is environmental education activities, and Drew Forest provides aquifer recharge in a densely populated region. It stores carbon and supports biodiversity, providing birds and other wildlife with natural habitat. Moreover, the forest is an important element in campus life and the educational mission of Drew, which itself is a major contributor to environmental knowledge. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Claire. And for those that haven't not made the connection, New Jersey Hills includes the Madison Eagle, and my statement is not completely clear, but I think that's Alex in the front row, so thank you for not only getting it, but for these people in Madison, across our country. Great story. Anyone else wishing to comment, please step forward. Seeing all that clears this part of the meeting, we'll move on to introductory ordinances. Where the clerk, please read the statement.
Ordinance is scheduled for first reading. Have a hearing date set for May 23, 2022. All will be published in the Madison Eagle, posted on the Bulletin Board and made available to members of the public requesting comments.
Our call of ordinance is for first reading. Ask the board clerk to read second ordinance by title. Ordinance 23-2022.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison, excuse me, ordinance of the Borough of Madison establishing a complete streets committee.
Mayor, I move ordinance 23-2022.
Second.
And as Rachel already reported, that this committee has existed, but we never formalized it. Somehow, the committee committee that we had a few years ago listed, so this now clarifies it. John?
Isn't the date actually May 25, not the 23rd? That's the date of our next council meeting, right?
Monday, the 23rd.
Monday's the 23rd, but our next council meeting, isn't it the 25th?
Nope, our meeting is the 23rd.
23rd?
Yes.
Okay.
Memorial Day is the following Monday, if that's right.
Yeah, we are. We are on Monday.
Sorry.
That's all right.
Any other comments? Local vote, please.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Erlich?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Range?
Yes.
Ordinance 24-2022.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $1,425,000 from the Water Capital Improvement Fund and $575,000 from the Water Capital Reserve for the replacement of water meters and communication modules.
Mayor, I move ordinance 24-2022.
Second.
In the council discussion, you just had a great report on backup on this. Local vote, please.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Erlich?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Range?
Yes.
Ordinance 25-2022.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $65,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for replacement of hydraulic hoses and repairs to ladder truck, to a ladder truck that's tower one.
Mayor, I move ordinance 25-2022.
Mayor, I second the ordinance.
In the council discussion, local vote, please.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Erlich?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Range?
Yes.
Ordinance 26-2022.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $43,600 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for the purchase of firefighter turnout gear, thermal cameras, and gas sensors.
Mayor, I move ordinance 26-2022.
I second the ordinance.
In the council discussion, all right, local vote, please.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Erlich?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Range?
Yes.
All right, ordinance 27 will be coming back next meeting. So now we move on to consent for general resolutions. Where the clerk, please read the statement.
Consent agenda resolutions will be enacted with a single motion. Any resolution requiring expenditure is supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any resolution requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda. All resolutions will be reflected in full in the minutes.
Mayor, I move consent agenda resolution R.142-2022 through R.148-2022.
Second.
Any other need to be called or any discussion? Local vote, please.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Erlich?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Range?
Yes.
All right, there is no unfinished business. The three-year voucher, where the clerk, please read the totals.
From the current fund, $123,882.19, and the general capital fund, $7,488. Electric operating fund, $127,496.65, and the electric capital fund, $2,146 even, and the water capital fund, $6,047.88, and from the trust, $14,228.71. The total is $281,289.43.
Mayor, I move approval of the vouchers.
Second.
Any discussion? Local vote, please.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Erlich?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Range?
Yes.
And there is no new business?
Mayor, I move adjourn the meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, and I will see you back in Madison, I don't know when. We'll see.